Are we on? The meeting is called to order. Southampton Town Planning Board, Thursday, November 8th, 2018. Absent of the Secretary, I will call the role. Member Burke.
Here.
Member Long.
Here.
Member Zuccarelli.
Here.
Member LaFaro.
Here.
Secretary Keith absent, Vice Chair Blaney absent. The Chair is present. Could we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no Secretary and no minutes, and we're going to jump in. Who's starting us? Claire, are you starting us off? All right.
Go in order of my items. My first one is Shinnecock Hardware East. It's an appli-- number two. It's an application for a special exception to install 1,000 gallon above-ground propane tank that's used for filling the tanks for barbecues and such, the smaller ones. We need more information. You have a checklist in your packet. I'm recommending incomplete. This is Shinnecock Hardware East. It's on County Road 39. So, it needs more information for access purposes. We need a clear survey. So, I'm recommending incomplete.
Incomplete?
Motion.
Motion by Jackie.
Second.
Second, Michael. Robin, all in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions. Five ayes, two absent.
Okay, so Bill Fox Grants Maintenance is a new application on County Road 39. It was processed under the name-- it was the old treasure inn that was demolished. It has frontage through to Hubbard. It was demolished, so this is a new build proposal for a special trade contractor building. It's a site plan-- it's a pre-submission request. However, we've been awaiting the plans, and they were supposed to come today at 10:00. I'm going to just table it. If it gets in before the end of the day, we'll just schedule the pre-submission, but if not, we'll just table it till next week. So, that's what I'm going to do right now. So, that's number three. Then my next one then is number 11, which is Rasco, Constantine, and Maureen. And in your packet is a pre-submission report.
Let us-- give us a second.
Sure.
Paul.
And it's labeled incorrectly. It's labeled nine because the agenda's changed.
Oh, it's labeled nine?
Page 52.
On the actual conference report.
Is it helpful to have paper copies too?
Unfortunately.
Yeah?
No, it's number 11. Okay.
Number 11.
Okay.
It's easier.
It's nothing. It's not easy.
Is this the site plan? We saw there's several times--
I can't really see in retrospect. No, I mean, on days when things go wrong, I always think about it.
This was a ZBA referral. They secured a ZBA variance because it's located in the R-20 zoning district. They're proposing to demolish a smaller building and build this 3,600 square foot building to be used for a warehousing. So...
What was the size of the property before?
The property is about two acres. Are you talking about the size of the building?
Yes.
It's in the description. It's a-- the proposal's 3,600 square feet. It's demolishing about 1,100 square feet of buildings. And existing is a 3,500 square foot repair shop for ag use and a 12,900 square foot warehouse, which is actually approved for some special trade contractor uses on the property.
But that's what's existing?
Those are existing, yeah.
Claire, I'm a little confused. Where it says proposed warehouse, no plumbing on the survey?
Correct. That's a new building.
That's 3,600 square feet, and it says existing storage building to be removed is 840 square.
That's right. That's a square footage, yes. I'm sorry.
So, we're going from 840 to 3,600?
Thirty-six hundred, yeah.
Is this pre-existing non-conforming?
There was a series of ZBA variances granted for this use on the property, which was originally a barn for ag uses. And through the years, they've gotten industrial uses on the property. And they secured a variance from the ZBA to allow this.
But if it's pre-existing non-conforming, they can't increase more than 50% of the original--
They are not up to the 50% yet, according to the ZBA. ZBA granted a variance.
A variance for this building or?
For the proposal for the new building, yep.
Somewhere in here is the ZBA decision?
Here we go. I did not put it in the packet. I have a copy of it if you need it.
Kathleen has looked at it?
I just don't know how we got from 840 to 3,600.
Do you have the time set?
Thirty-six hundred from 840.
I don't think so. I'm just-- I was just trying to figure out where it was.
Kathleen, do you have the ZBA decision?
Not yet.
It's R-20.
Yeah, so it's--
It's residential.
Right. And there's here. Is this--
Lot coverage.
I'm-- it's probably what they--
So, they're going by lot coverage.
Wait. The construction proposed reflects a 22% expansion.
Or a maximum. 50% is permitted, right? That's the pre-existing non-conforming.
So, it only went up 20? How did they--
This really just for structures as shown on the survey.
I'm confused. How did it go? How did they--
Kathleen, should you take a look at this?
It depends on when it first became non-conforming. So, you can't presume that it was initially non-conforming at the 800 square feet.
Well, I think the ZBA is saying it's a 50% increase only, and they section-- and they reference that code. They reference pre-existing non-conforming. 3311, right? 3311?
That's the dimensional regulations.
I'm just trying to see how it got from 860 to 22%. The numbers are not working. Was there a-- was it-- is this a variance on top of the variance?
I haven't seen it. Yeah, I can see that.
Okay. So, it's a variance on top of a variance?
Yes.
Because the numbers would not work any other way?
We're variance on top of the variance. They're recognizing the square footage of the buildings that are on the property now. And so, they did an analysis when they did--
Because it went from 840--
I didn't see that yet.
Yeah.
Pass that down to Kathleen.
No, but they're looking at the whole-- I think they're looking at the whole square footage of all the buildings on the property.
But they also referenced variance, is that correct? The buildings that are there?
There are some buildings that received variance over the years, yep.
I have a feeling this building also. I don't know. Let Kathleen look at it because the numbers are confusing to me.
Do you want me to go through the other issues and then come back to that?
Sure.
Okay. So, there was a pre-submission conference on September 27th. No public comments were received at the conference nor during the 30-day written comment period. They would need a full site plan application, including lighting, landscaping, building elevations, with materials and colors noted, engineering information, the site plan details on parking, drainage, outdoor lighting, landscaping, and architecture. The project is an unlisted action, and the planning board granted a negative declaration on April 26th, 2018. The proposal's for an additional commercial building on a residential parcel, and the ZBA decision I referenced. I'll put more language in terms of describing what they've granted the variance for. I did want to talk about the appearance of the building. You want to speak?
Yeah, if I may, just to clarify.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the decision articulates, you know, your pre-existing non-conforming expansion, your so-called 50% rule, that takes into consideration all of the square footage of the structures on the property, not just the one building that you're looking at, which is the 800. The total square footage of the buildings on the property is 16,400. So, this does represent 22% of an increase, which is within the 50% parameter.
That's odd logic, isn't it?
It's the way the statute is written. So, if you have-- so, for example, a typical example is when you have two houses on one lot, which is a pre-existing non-conforming use by its nature in most residential zoning districts, right? You can only have one house on a lot. You're allowed to take that total square footage and then expand one of those by 50%.
So, you take the two buildings and--
Because the two buildings constitute your non-conforming use. And the way the statute is written, it's 50% of the non-conformity. So, they are within the correct percentage.
But you'll never get rid of a pre-existing non-conforming use that way. Because what's happening is you're expanding it exponentially each time. Each time that there's a variance, you add more square footage to it.
Remember, the statute says up to 50%.
Up to, right.
If for some reason that automatically means 50%.
Yeah, yeah. Everybody just assumes 50. But that, then, the pie gets bigger and bigger and bigger. Doesn't the statute is--
Well, the alternative argument that you often hear from an applicant is that in the alternative, they could knock everything down and as of right, typically based on your dimensional regulations and your lot coverage, build an even bigger building. So, then it's an analysis for the ZBA to weigh whether or not they want to have one really big house, right? Or two smaller houses, but still larger than what was there before. That's your typical scenario in these cases.
That's the-- but this is in an R-20 zone. This is surrounded by houses.
Yes, I see that, yeah.
And located on County Road 39 and proposed to be HO in the future. So, there was some consideration, probably from the ZBA point of view, of the nature of it being on County Road 39.
What was the number you had for-- because I just am seeing different numbers on the survey.
The survey pursuant to this decision, the survey submitted with the application indicates the square footage of the existing buildings dedicated to the non-conforming uses was 16,400 square feet.
Okay, because--
As such, the premises is permitted to an expansion of 8,200 square feet, where 3,600 is proposed, or 22.
Okay, so the existing storage building is not included in those computations or doesn't have to be included in those computations?
The 840.
Forty.
I would imagine it is.
It isn't. I'm just looking at the survey. That's why I'm having confusion. It says lot coverage. So, you have 12,900, 3,500, and 840 comes out to 17,240. And they're saying the total existing of the warehouse and repair on the ag for ag use was 16,400, 16,400. I'm just looking at the survey. I'm just confused as to--
Right, you have an existing warehouse at 12,900.
Yeah, I have an existing--
Existing building at 3,500.
Thirty-five hundred for the garage.
And 80 foot, right. The total square footage is 16,240.
And then, but here--
Kathleen, do you have a map?
No.
If you look at the difference between the lot coverage and then the paragraph underneath that, just if you can explain to me. I don't-- I mean, I might be end up giving them more. I don't know. I'm not sure what I'm giving them.
And it's pre-submission, Claire, because it's--
Because it's an unlisted action.
Unlisted.
You already issued a negative declaration on the action.
Yeah, I appreciate what you're saying. I don't see that 840 referenced in this decision, but it is a May 2018 decision. Is there an applicant here who can explain why that's not on there? The applicant's here?
The building is pretty much falling down. It's--
Could you just state your name for the--
Oh, I'm sorry. Tracy Schaleski, JW Consulting, PO Box 674, Corum, New York 11727.
So, you're saying it wasn't included in there because it's not usable or?
No, it's not at all usable. I mean, I'm not sure if you guys have photos of it, but the roof only has like a couple of like two-by-fours going.
Is it still CVO?
Yeah. It still has the CEO. I don't understand why the surveyor didn't include it in his calculations, but it's not--
Do you have plans to remove it?
Yeah, I was going to say. Frankly. Honestly, you guys are the first ones.
Yeah.
What? Oh, get it. Just help.
It would depend on when it was built. Because your non-conforming use is at the time that it became non-conforming. Anything that's come after that contributes to your 50%. In other words, if you have 20,000 square feet pre-existing in 1962, and then in 1988, you do an additional 1,000 square feet, well, the 1,000 square feet of your 50% has been eaten up. So, in this case, that might have come after the fact, and now that they're taking it down, it's just simply out of the calculation. If you add up the two numbers, that comes up to the number that Kathleen--
To 17,000.
That's the 16,000.
Yes, 16,000. Right, if you don't count that in.
So, they didn't include it.
So, they didn't include it?
They didn't include it.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand how the calculations are done.
Yeah, sure.
Well, I mean, I go back to the statute. I just think that it works against itself logically. If you keep making it larger, then the 50% of the larger number always gives you a larger square footage.
Yeah, that's a policy decision of the town board.
Yeah, yeah, no, legislatively, I know. Well, listen, pre-existing non-conforming, Dennis and I have talked about it. It's up to 50%. No one has ever done less than 50%.
Oh, they don't.
So, you never get-- you never retire the pre-existing non-conforming uses, which is the intention of it.
It doesn't seem an application to work that way, which--
So, we'll put it on our list of recommendations to the town board.
Under the Christmas tree. Now, tell us about the architecture.
Oh, yes.
It's here.
Again, it's in your packet, and it's a prefab building.
It's hard to read.
Sorry.
It's just a long--
There it is. It's a long metal box.
Metal box.
And I've got colors for you too.
Well, I think in a residential area, it needs to have something done to it.
Get it in there.
You'd have to use a microphone.
You have to use an mic.
I know it looks like it's a residential area. However, almost none of the property is seen from the residential properties. There's substantial screen planting along the backside of the property, along the side of the property. And where it's going to be located is--
In the front?
In the rear.
In the rear, right.
In the rear. And that there is over eight foot.
When you access Summers Lane, you're in the direct sightline.
No, but you're not, because there's-- I think the bushes over there are at least 10 feet high. There were photos that I had submitted to the BZI originally. I'm not sure if I have copies at this point, but it's not viewable. Even when I stood on the roof of my car to take photos, you're only going to be able to see maybe the peak of the roof of this thing, and it's going to be green.
Well, there's some minor modifications we typically, even in light industrial areas like industrial parks, to give a building a little more of a residential look. That includes minor things like shutters on windows, a decorative cupola or two, maybe in this case.
Well, if you add a cupola, then it will definitely be viewable from the surrounding properties. As it's proposed now, it's not really something that's going to muck up anybody's eye line, even from the second story of the houses along Summer Lane. I think Summer Lane is the one on the back.
What do the other buildings look like? Do you have pictures?
Just like that.
Do you have any-- do you have pictures?
She said just like this.
Yeah, well, just like this.
Claire, do you know if the buffering around the site was something that this board imposed way back or ever?
No, I don't think--
No.
Thanks.
We haven't imposed anything to date. The only action you've done on the property to date is to allow for that access onto the side road.
Onto Summer? Onto Summer.
Onto--
This is the one you're tearing down?
Yes.
Okay.
Let me think about that.
That's the existing building.
Okay, that's what you're tearing down?
That's what we're tearing down. That's the existing building in the back. This is just--
Yeah, Summer. Summer had the access.
This is what you can see.
Summer here.
That's from the property.
This is from the property, looking at the residential. So, the residential from the second floor can come back, right?
It would probably be productive if, Claire, if you share a couple of the sketches we've done on Enterprise Zone, these Jim DeLuca plans, where they have the band, they break up--
The stone apron on the bottom.
Yeah, they do an apron, they do shutters on the windows. Just looking for some enhancements to the architecture.
Okay.
And maybe some buffering.
Yeah.
There's significant hedges on the property.
I'm just--
What is it, just private? Is it private?
It's--
That's probably what they're telling, but I'm looking at--
Just says hedge on the plan, I think.
Yeah, I think you can see from the posting photos that I have.
Yeah, I'm just-- I'll pass this down. I'm just looking at these residential from--
That's the front of the property.
Right, okay. So, they can see--
That's along 39.
They can--
This is--
They can--
Those are the evergreens.
This residential.
Yeah.
Okay, that is along the back end.
Right.
So, it's substantial. Like I said, if I stood on the roof of my car in front of the, like, in one of the driveways, you're hard pressed to see. Not that I'm a very tall person.
I'm looking at, yeah, at the survey, and it shows there are hedges along the driveway. There's hedges here.
No, it goes all the way around.
Okay, well, the surveyor failed to note anything, so--
Yeah.
I have to go. Yeah, I can go. I see the hedges back here, but I don't see--
The building is pretty visible.
That's 39. That's from 39.
Yeah, that's the front building.
Yeah.
They're not touching that.
No.
So, Claire, on item three, where you have appearance of building question mark, maybe we just want to insert some language to--
Yeah, shutters on the--
Create some residential-- We'll leave it to the applicant to create some enhancement, some residential features to enhance the--
Do you want to keep the file?
And see what comes back to us.
Okay.
If that's up to the consent--
Yes, Claire.
Great.
That sounds great.
Claire, do you want to submit those pictures as part of the file, or it's up to you?
I think it would be helpful to--
Okay, so I'm going to leave the pictures.
Is that-- if that's fine with you? Yeah. Okay, great. Oh, that's fine. Okay, so the remainder of it, I'll have them also note the landscaping, the hedges, the type, height--
Yes.
--on the plan. Okay, and then the typical dumpster. It is archologically sensitive, but it was previously disturbed, and you said secret decisions, no archaeological necessary. They'll have lighting, information, mechanicals to be screened, and the referrals. Would you want them to have a public hearing? There was a public hearing at the pre-submission process, no comments, and the ZBA, and there was no comments, so wait it.
I don't think, yeah.
It's not necessary? Okay. And that's all I have. Now, they submitted an application for completeness, which I thought was complete. They had the samples, they had the materials. But do you want to see this enhancement in the site plan before you deem it complete?
Yeah.
Yes, please.
So, if you can work on that. No, you just submitted it, so I'm not going to deem you incomplete right now, but if you can get it in next week, we have a meeting next week, so. Okay, yeah, we need that confirmation from us, and we can consider it next week.
What's the height of the building? Off the top of your head?
Oh, sorry.
Should be low.
Should be low, right?
12' plus 6'4" is 18'8".
18'8".
That sounds good. Do you want to adopt the pre-submission report as amended?
Yes. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Zuccarelli. Second by Gloria. All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions. Five ayes, two absent. Thanks so much. Thanks for the pictures. Oh, we have to pass them down. No more tossing on the desk.
Can I have that ZBA?
I gave it to--
It's down there.
I just want to bring that in. Thank you.
Are we doing watermill townhouses?
We. I am giving you a copy of the staff report, which we will consider next meeting. The applicant couldn't attend this meeting.
Okay, so we'll distribute--
Yeah, distribute, take a look at it, and we'll discuss for the next--
Was that emailed, or is it hard copy?
I sent it to, but I have hard copy for you today.
Okay, good, great.
I love hard copy.
Official spirit, you know, you can make notes on the hard copy.
And it opens up, I can turn the pages.
Do you want me to email it to? I can't.
Oh, this is fine.
It's fine. There might be some updates. I might get some referrals, so if I do, then I'll let you know. But otherwise, it probably will be fine. The next one now is 13 West Hampton Country Club.
West Hampton Country Club. That's the one, we have it here, yeah.
Will the site plan be helpful?
Yeah. Sure.
Collations also.
Yeah. You want to see it? Pretty large. Straddles the town village, I believe it does.
So, this is a site plan and wetlands permit application?
Yes, it does. But mostly activities in the town.
So, West Hampton Country Club is mostly in the village.
Mostly in the town.
A portion is in the town of Southampton, and the maintenance facility just happens to be in the town. You get there by a dirt road, which kind of goes through wetlands. It's not that great a situation, but it's an existing facility, and the proposal is to demolish all existing structures, pull them away from the wetlands, and to create more of a state-of-the-art maintenance facility and area for the employees. So, the proposal is for 15,850 square foot maintenance facility and associated uses. It's on the 66 acre parcel for the golf course, which is located at 66 Bay Crest Avenue in West Hampton. The public submission, pre-submission conference was September 27th, and there was no comments. They would need a full application, lighting, landscaping, building elevations, engineering information, full wetlands permits, site plan and details on parking, pedestrian and traffic circulation, drainage, sanitary, outdoor lighting, landscaping, and architecture. And it is an unlisted action, they'll need a short form. So this is a site plan and wetlands permit application?
Yes, it does. But mostly activities in the town.
So West Hampton Country Club is mostly in the village.
Mostly in the town.
A portion is, uh, in the town of Southampton, and the maintenance facility just happens to be in the town. Um, you get there by a dirt road, which kind of goes through wetlands. It's not that great a situation, um, but it's an existing facility, and the proposal is to demolish all existing structures, pull them away from the wetlands, and to create more of a state-of-the-art maintenance facility and area for the employees. So the proposal is for a fifteen thousand eight hundred fifty square foot meets facility and associated uses. It's on the sixty-six acre parcel for the golf course, uh, which is located at sixty-six Bay Crest Avenue in West Hampton. Um, the public submission, pre-submission conference was September twenty-seventh, and there was no comments. Uh, they would need a full application, lighting, landscaping, building elevations, engineering information, uh, full wetlands permits, site plan and details on parking, pedestrian and traffic circulation, drainage, sanitary, outdoor lighting, landscaping, and architecture, and, uh, it is an unlisted action, they'll need a short form, and, uh, so number one, unlisted action, secret would have to be done. Number two, the existing maintenance facility is proposed to be demolished, the buildings and the gas tanks are located within the required wetland setbacks of the town of Southampton. Gravel parking area indicated five feet from the wetlands, the existing setback. The new building is proposed to meet the required a hundred-foot setback, the parking areas proposed with a minimum of thirty-three foot setback. A referral should be sent to the environmental division. The wetlands line should be verified by the environmental division. Potential wetlands issues include the use of permeable paving materials near the wetlands areas. The FEMA flood zone should be indicated on the plan. The test of side chemical storage trailer should be located well outside potential flood zones. Um, the IIA system, uh, is recommended for the project, and I think they're proposing to do that. Dumpsters, of course, the appearance of the building, so if you want to take a look at the elevations, um, I think in this case they have.
Is this printed in the ARB?
Not yet. Uh, this is just pre-submission. They haven't submitted a formal application. Portion of it does have the cupolas on it, um...
Has the what?
Cupolas, some cupolas on the building. We could talk about that more, and it's located in the archeologically sensitive area. Uh, I don't know if you feel this area is disturbed already, because they're demolishing buildings and basically pulling them back, but the same area is being disturbed. Do you have any?
No new areas being disturbed.
Not really, no.
But what about, I'm more concerned about the wetlands.
Oh, and wetlands are important. So I reviewed this momentarily, you know, catching Marty with it. He was in agreement that it all needed to come back, you know, the drainage structures, putting new drainage structures in there were really important. So he's the one who suggested the flood zones, uh, the permeable surface areas for the, you know, any parking area. Um, it's, if you're comparing the five-foot setback now that they have for, you know, the activity area to a greater setback with the thirty-three feet they're doing, is, it is definitely a benefit. And with the project, you can see that they're establishing a non-fertilization disturbance area, which will go a long way, planted out and, um, doing that, so.
Any chance of rerouting that access road so that it's not, um, it goes through the wetlands?
It's, it's not through the wetlands, it's now an up, the road itself is an upland area. So, um, I mean, that's always the comment you can make to the applicant, see if there's any alternatives with that.
You certainly wouldn't want to pave it, right?
No.
You wouldn't want to, and I think it calls it out as dirt at this point, so.
And there's just no other way in there?
It doesn't appear to be. The applicant's here, the representative's here, if you want to speak to him about that issue.
Hi, Joe Lombardi from the Raina Group, representing, uh, West Hampton Country Club. As far as the access to the maintenance area goes, uh, there, there really isn't another way to get in there. It's, it's been in, that, Earth Road has been in use for many years, um, and, uh, you know, it had, a previous site plan for the maintenance area was approved with that dirt road. It hasn't changed, so.
And you've examined the layout, and you don't see any alternative way in, right?
No, we don't.
What's north of that? You have a, a dirt path. Yeah. You have, up at that end, you have, um, diesel storage, um, a pump, commercial storage trailer, but how does that, where does this go?
Oh, where that road goes?
Yes.
Well, away from the wetlands, hopefully.
Yeah, but I mean, I wonder if you could get in, that's.
Yeah, where does this go?
Where does this go? That runs along the golf course, doesn't really help to get into the maintenance, uh, to divert traffic off of that other road. Because we need access to the other side of the pond.
But where does that come in?
Uh, I don't have an aerial with me, I'd have to take a look just to.
Well, it's a question.
Okay.
Because if there's any alternative.
All right, well.
It would be preferable.
We'll examine it as part of the formal site plan submission.
Just give us a wider.
Yes.
Any other items, Claire?
Do you want to answer the question about the archeologically sensitive? Do you want to make a determination on that?
Yeah, I think it's, it's, as long as it's disturbed site.
Right.
Because that would be important.
And the DEC is going to be notified?
Um, we'd probably suggest they get a letter of non-jurisdiction from the DEC.
Yeah.
Or whatever, I think a permit, you need a permit. Yeah, you'd have a permit for it.
We'll apply for a permit if we get a letter of non-jurisdiction.
Yeah, but most likely wouldn't because.
But you'll apply.
It's within.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll apply.
Yeah, so they'll need a permit.
So the report's going to note that we're looking for alternative.
Access.
Access to going the dirt road through the wetlands area, so, okay. This is going to note that.
Um, also, did you want to look at the building? Did you want to make any comments?
Looks nice, the people like that.
I mean, this is an internal to their site, it's quite a large site.
It is, yeah, it's more internal.
Certainly done, you know.
Yeah.
It's more an internal, this is, as opposed to the other.
Right, okay, so, um, it's, it's appropriate for the facility, okay?
Refer to the ARB.
Sure. Okay.
In our hearing, there was no public comment. This is pre-submission.
Yeah, this is pre-submission, uh, if you're agreeable with that, I'll make the note about the access, um, any alternatives, um, and then the appearance is appropriate and the archaeological, and also.
Do we motion to adopt the report? Motion by Jackie.
Second.
Second by Robin, all in favor, aye. Oppose abstentions, five yes, two absent.
I think I'm done. Oh, and then, um, you're going to sign Polacko, which is going to be a walk-on.
I will, I'll, I'll note that, um, Claire.
Um, Bridge Hampton Commons, uh, we've got a request from the applicant to open the hearing tonight, but adjourn it because they cannot attend. Um, they have, I think they're going to submit all their information.
Has it been noticed?
It's been noticed, so of course if the public comes, you can hear the public.
This public here will go and take comments.
Um, you'd take comments. I've kind of tried to tell the public, because I found out yesterday afternoon, so, um, so I'm not quite sure how many people show up.
All right.
But just for your information, maybe you could make an announcement at the beginning of the meeting, that might help you. And then next week, secret training, three-thirty.
Secret training, three-thirty. Thank you, Claire.
Claire, I have a question. Not on this application, but last couple of weeks ago, we approved, um, the building of a small, um, facility in the Atlantic Golf Course.
Yes.
And it was brought to the attention, at least it was in the newspaper, I don't know how valid it is, that there's the tiger salamander, uh, site, and that was never brought up to us, uh, or revealed in the application.
We did a referral to DEC, and they chose not to respond. So, um, I have been in touch with the DEC since, and that, my understanding is that they're going to issue a letter of non-jurisdiction on the issue. Letter of what, I'm sorry? Non-jurisdiction.
So they're saying that in terms of endangered species, it's not?
It's outside their jurisdiction. So the activity that's proposed, that you approved, is outside their jurisdiction. That is my understanding. We are going to visit it before you sign any plans or anything on this, okay?
So is there any other agency that is brought in when you have a tiger salamander situation?
DEC.
It is DEC.
DEC, completely DEC.
Completely.
Yes.
That's why I asked, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And they're, so they're not?
That's what, that's my understanding. And it's a valid concern.
It is.
And, and if we heard it during the process, we would have addressed it.
Exactly.
Um, but you can only do referrals, and you speak to your experts, and.
Right.
Um, environmental did not bring it up as an issue, so, you know.
We've, we've addressed other environmental issues with.
A hundred percent, yeah.
Yeah.
Turtles.
Turtles, yes.
Turtles.
Right.
Foreology, I mean, and you said foreology, so, you know, that covers tiger salamanders too, so.
Sure. As long as you're looking into it.
Okay, but when we referred it, could we possibly bring to their attention so that they specifically are, are noticed that there is some community concerned about the tiger salamanders, so maybe they'll look into it a little, so we, at least we have a response to that?
In the future, we can totally do that, because we could anticipate that at pre-submission.
But I'm just concerned that it's been brought to our attention now, we're on notice that there might be an issue. Can we request the DEC for follow-up?
Well, I think Claire just said that she's in contact with them.
Right, but let them, let them know that. It's been noticed to us by Larry Penny, who is the natural resources director at East Hampton, that this, that there are tiger salamanders in those ponds, so.
Uh, it, not on the property, on adjacent ponds, that's my understanding also, but, you know, we're looking into it.
Let's flag it to them, okay.
Okay, no, it's very valid.
Thank you, Claire.
Thank you.
Great, Matt, which, how, where are you starting us off?
Number one.
Good place to start.
We'll start in the beginning.
I like the logic.
You have Herman Beck?
Yes, Herman Jonathan Beck. This is a pre-application for a lotline modification. We did look at this last weekend, it was deemed incomplete. The applicant has since submitted revised maps, which clearly illustrate the lotline modification. Um, it's, you know, they're proposing to transfer just under three thousand square feet from parcel C to parcel A. The total project area is six, sixty-eight thousand square feet and change. This is an R forty, at one forty-three and ninety Jagger Lane in West Hampton. The larger piece will remain conforming, and the smaller piece will be closer to conforming, but remain not conforming. And we're looking to deem this complete instead of hearing for, I believe, December fifteenth.
Okay, very good, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jackie.
Second.
Second by Robin, all in favor, aye. Oppose abstentions, five yes, two absent.
Moving on to fourteen.
Fourteen.
Henry Kraszewski, North C, having a draft staff report and draft decision.
I'll distribute.
Renderings and elevation.
Very nice. Some renderings here, pass those out. And this is a survey. Very similar to what they did at Pumpkin Town.
Yeah. And I also have a revised staff report.
A revised staff report, okay.
Some additional comments.
Take one, pass it down.
Yep.
And take one, pass it down. Take one, pass it down. Do you have an extra?
Is this the same as what's on the? No, it's revised. If everyone has a copy, I will go through the report.
Summarize where possible.
Sure. Construction permits for the, proposed construction of an agricultural barn for storage use with twenty-seven hundred square feet of enclosed floor area totaling approximately three thousand nine hundred and ninety-five square feet, that's including the open porch areas. Um, this is on an ag reserve created by the map of Glenna E. Jaeger, which was about two thousand two, um, in the LI forty zoning district, New York State archeologically sensitive area with fronted on County Road thirty-nine, three sixty-nine, County Road thirty-nine A, and North C. I have the maps there in front of you. It's kind of a unique parcel, it's one ag reserve, that's between the town and the village. We're obviously looking at the town piece, and that's where all the improvements are proposed to occur.
You have to refer it to the village?
It was referred, which is in the report. The application was determined to be a type-two action, therefore no further environmental review is required.
Site plan.
In terms of public comments, um, the planning board held a public hearing on October eleventh and provided a ten-day written comment period. No comments were received during the public hearing nor during the document period. Referrals, the town engineer just called out some issues on the plan, that the meets and bounds description isn't shown between the village parcel, the parcel that's within the village and the parcel that's within the town. They did speak, uh, the town engineer's office did speak to the U-shaped driveway and that a roadwork permit will likely be required from the county. And she did speak to parking, I did clarify with the town engineer's office that there are no parking requirements for agricultural construction when it's for a storage use. And then she just asked for some clarification on the map for edge restraint, and that this is subject to a fee.
But, but are they not going to have a farm stand as well?
Uh, that is a separate application, that's before the fire marshal, it's not within the planning board's jurisdiction, we're simply looking at it as a storage building.
As a structure.
Yeah. It will be a farm stand.
That's an annual permit.
Yeah, it's a yearly permit that's through the fire marshal's office. So if they want to do that at a later time, that's, you know, sort of up to them.
And what do they do about parking, then, if it's a?
Parking, they have to meet a certain, there's requirements that, that are built within the permit, I don't know off the top of my head.
So it doesn't, it doesn't come to us, yeah?
Doesn't come to us, yeah.
So there's nothing in-ground here on this site, right? This is an archeological sensitive area?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's been a farm field for, pretty much forever, so it's historically disturbed, as far as I can tell.
Yeah, but that's exactly when.
Yeah.
Don't fall into that myth.
Yeah, just true, yeah.
That's where artifacts are found, usually.
Referral was received from SCPW, they were, they withheld their approval, um, just, they were asking for the plant to revise to show removal of the western apron, replace the eastern access with an ADA compliant concrete apron, and that the driveway with the county road of way must be with full depth asphalt pavement, pavement. So I spoke to the applicant, when they widened County Road thirty-nine, they had made him put in two curb cuts, now I guess they're changing their mind, now they want him to go back to a one curb cut.
Oh, nice.
Are they going back to one?
Yeah, back to one.
Really?
So you go to the agricultural advisory committee, who approved the application as it was presented to them, in ter, of, and comments received from the village of Southampton, that's what we got yesterday, I wanted to incorporate those into the report, they did express some concern about a possible farm stand use on the site, will there be out of parking, what will the traffic be like? And I did, you know, speak to them that, again, there's requirements that have to be met, but it's a separate permit for a seasonal farm stand use, that, you know, it's time limited, they do have to show that there is a parking area, but like I said, it's, it's separate from this application. And the parking would be on County, local County Road thirty-nine, which is, is town land? The everything, all the improvements are going to be on the piece that's within the town. Fire prevention did recommend that the address for the property was changed, would be changed, because it did, originally it had a North Main Street address, which is actually within the village, but it appears that the applicant has already changed the address, that's why it has that new County Road thirty-nine address. And the fire, uh, the fire district is recommending the installation of an alarm system and hot box. Architectural review board indicated approval. Uh, no comments were received from the North C, North C CAC, um, in terms of site plan standards and zoning requirements, um, in terms of setbacks, the project meets all the minimal, minimum dimensional and setback requirements within LI forty. In terms of use and orientation of the proposed agricultural barn, uh, we're recommending that they shift the barn, so the front is parallel to the existing property line, if you can see, it kind of runs on an angle to County Road thirty-nine.
Yeah.
And the existing plan, it's, doesn't, it just faces straight to the north, we're asking them to shift it so it runs parallel to that property line, so you can see the acro, the architectural features of that nice building.
So why is there a note on the plan that says landscaping and lighting, separate plants, prepared by others?
I have, not sure.
Did you see that?
Haven't gotten those plans, no. And we're not, we generally don't require that they submitting landscaping plans on an agricultural piece.
What about lighting?
Lighting, if, that's a condition of approval, if they're going to do lighting, they would have to.
Signage.
It would be.
Lighting signage.
And then I did list all the items that the applicant intends to store in the building, and, you know, that justifies the use. And in, in order to ensure that the building is used for bona fide agriculture use only, the planning board shall impose the following general conditions. Um, no top soil shall be removed from the site, top soil shall be retained and distributed around the exterior of the proposed buildings or otherwise on the site as necessary, provided that the removal of subsoil for the installation of storm drains to control runoff from roofs and other impervious areas, um, or for sanitary systems shall be allowed, no landscaping or horticultural services shall be operated from the project site, no signage shall be installed on site, no signage between street numbers, no living quarters shall be installed on site unless approved by the planning board, all utilities serving the site shall be installed underground from the existing utility located in the street right of way, um, no outdoor storage of equipment within fifty feet of all property lines. Any proposed lighting shall be subject to planning board review and approval, and then H compliance with town code three thirty dash seventy-nine point one, temporary permit for accessory farm stand if applicable, so if they choose to do that, they just have to, you know, comply with the code. Um, the proposed parking area and loading area is adequate for the proposed use, and I'm recommending traffic shall be controlled when exiting the site to allow for a right turn only onto County Road thirty-nine, so they're not crossing the highway to go west.
Where is the parking? In the front?
It's in the front, yeah. We generally just ask them to show a sta, a staging area where they can park a few vehicles on an agricultural.
Well, we would, we would try to get the parking in the rear building.
Yeah, if, if you want to recommend that it's relocated.
I mean, it's such a visible, highly visible spot.
Don't want to encroach into the ag.
Yeah, that's the other term, in terms of what the, where the soils are. They don't farm in front of it.
Move the building up a little to put the parking behind. Is that possible?
I would highly recommend that.
Yeah, there's, I know it's fruit and bushes there.
What do you have?
Yeah, Hank, just use the.
I mean, the typical orientation of these farm stands is sort of informal. There's a canopy, there's informal parking out front. It's not like a, like a highway business site plan. Hello, Hank, just state your name.
Hank Kraszewski Jr. The reason we, the parking would be in front is because we have raspberries and blackberries planted behind the building where it's going to go, and then strawberries is the rest of the field, so.
How about the side?
The side is also strawberries. They'll come right up. The strawberry, where we plant them, because the field is kind of small for us, and we just have fruit there, the strawberries will come right up to the building.
Love those strawberries.
Yeah, I mean, it's great. You've designed a great building. We love it, but, you know, you've got, then you've got trucks and cars parked in front. And is there any way to move the building?
So if you know where our farm stand is now, that's, okay, that's where we're kind of planning on using that as our parking as well. We're not going to continue to bring the field up for any further, and the building is going to be to the left where the blackberries and raspberries are now.
Just.
So the whole kind of, the whole front of it would be all parking?
I know we typically don't do parking in the front, but in this case, I just don't want to see them, him lose any, you know, farmable area in the front soils.
Yeah, it's a different type of use. It's, it's farm stand has a particular, it's not like a commercial site, like a furniture store or something like that, that we're doing a formal, I think it's going to be gravel parking also.
Yes.
Usually put some decorative hay bale. And then November, they close up, right?
We'll close Air Labor Day.
Yeah.
And then we go to Pumpkin Town.
So you're going to apply for a farm stand permit?
A seasonal farm stand.
Operating from when to when?
From when we open our, usually right around the middle of June with strawberries till Labor Day.
And cars then just pull off the road?
That, that's how we do it now. The parking lot's right in front of the farm stand and it's in and out, in, one in, one out. And the county wants us to just have one entrance and exit instead of having the in and out. It'll just be one way in and one way out.
But what you've got there is tiny compared to what, to this, so.
Yes, but it's, yeah, well, there should be more parking than, than what we had before.
I think you need to take a look at that.
People typically don't use the lanes they park along.
Right, right along, on the side there, yeah, going down.
But that's County Road 39, I mean, it's a.
No, in sight, but they don't use the parking stalls like you're going to a medical office, you park them stall and you walk inside. Usually people pull into a farm stand, they pull off to, into the site, off to the side.
And the building is going to be used for storage, so it's not like.
Yeah.
But they do intend to use it as a.
We're anticipating farm stand.
Yeah, but there's been a farm stand there as long as I can remember.
Small, small little building. I mean, it's temporary, right? That little, how big is the little building?
The shed.
Yeah, shed.
It's probably 20 feet long and 10 feet wide.
It's tiny, yeah. 200 square feet. Which access road do you?
They're closing up the western, the smaller one on the west. That's a shame.
It really is.
Yeah.
Because it'd almost make it flow better if they had one way in and one way out.
Yeah.
Sure.
Safer.
Well, why don't we make that recommendation to the county?
I don't know that we can.
Of course we can.
I mean.
We can ask.
We can.
Have you gone to the county, Hank, and talked to them?
We have, and they, they wanted it, they thought it would be safer to have one in and one, the same entrance and exit.
Of course it's not, because as people are pulling in.
People are going out.
And people are going out.
We kind of.
Is affected.
With the typical farm stand, as Dennis is saying, where you sort of pull in off the road kind of thing, having the two curb cuts make it a whole lot safer because it's not going in to a formal parking lot that's striped.
Also, think about it, farm stands.
Yeah, I can't, I can't see them changing their minds on.
They never change their mind. Don't bother. Well, thank you for encouragement there.
Did you, did you actually have a sit-down session with them?
How do you really feel? We went over it afterwards and they wanted us to take out the one, the entrance closer to 711.
All right, you got to work with what you got, Hank, that's, it is what it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so what else have we got in the report? Matt?
Architecture, the architectural review board indicated approval as noted above. No outdoor display or sales areas proposed at this time and drainage town engineer conditions noted above shall be complied with. Staff recommend approval of the site plan with modification based upon the recommendations and requirements outlined within.
Do you have a resolution?
And I do have a resolution.
All right, before we get to the resolution, can we just go back one issue on the parking? So the parking that we've designed here is based on it being a storage. Am I correct?
Yeah, that's, I mean.
And if they make the application for a permit, do they have to have additional?
They, I believe in the code, it does speak to, they have to have some kind of usable parking area. They do have to meet requirements in term of parking. I don't know if there's a number of spaces that they have.
Do you have the space to put in? Because you, because I'm just hearing two conversations.
Yeah, I know, we want to get on the same page.
Happening here at once. And I'd like to get on the same page, exactly. So the application before us is purely for a storage.
Storage, yeah.
The parking that they're giving us is purely for a storage.
Yeah, well, there's, yeah, there's no parking requirement for the storage.
Okay, but they put the parking in front.
Yeah, they did, yeah.
If it goes through an application, we're going to re, are we revisiting it?
No, it's the fire marshal's office.
We don't do farm stands.
Oh, so we won't, so we won't, but it will require additional parking?
I don't know if it's additional. They just have to meet whatever the requirements are in terms of parking.
In other words, they don't need parking here for this use at all?
No.
It says an area.
I mean, we generally, we generally ask that they have an area where they could park, where they could, you know, maneuver to get things in and out.
But you have parking specified on here, I'm not saying crazy.
Yeah, no, I, no, they did include parking here, but it's not a requirement.
Almost we should.
In terms of.
Well, that's.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, in terms of the special requirements for the temporary farm stand permit, 330-79.1, F is in Frank V, an area shall be provided for the informal parking of at least five vehicles off the public right of way.
So that's.
But they just call for an area.
Yeah.
So that's for, that's for demonstration purpose. I mean, are we better off just asking them to remove for the, for our approval, just remove the part of parking?
Yeah, I, I think so.
Right? Because that way we're not, we're not granting any, formalizing any parking.
And parking in the front.
Yeah, because that's what I'm concerned of. We're, we're looking at an application and passing on parking that is.
They can show the area.
Show the area, just don't show specifics.
Just don't show.
Don't have calculations. That's fine, we can take that off.
Okay.
So you have a resolution.
I do, and if you want to go to the conditions, I can add that.
Is that in our packet?
It is.
Yeah.
It is.
He handed it out to Dennis.
No, it's just the staff report he had.
Oh, it's just the staff.
Yeah, there should be a resolution in the.
After the staff report.
It's a construction permit.
Oh, God.
Is it after the staff report or before?
Hmm, I'm not sure where it is in yours.
You're not a help to us today.
They're not, they're not the same.
Oh, I found it. It's in the packet.
Yeah, it's in, it's in your, it's in your packet, yeah.
It's the first thing in the packet.
It should come up, I believe they come, the resolutions come first and then where the attachments are, because we never see it.
I have the hard copy.
We never see the hard copy that you see. So if you'd like me to go to the conditions.
Sure, what conditions do you have?
Changes to the plans, as I said, shift the proposed agricultural building as to run parallels to the existing property line, so the architectural features of the building's facade oriented towards County Road 39 indicate that traffic shall be controlled when exiting the site to allow for right turn only onto County Road 39 with appropriate signage to be installed. Show the meets and bounds description for the property line shared between those two parcels, the one that lies within the town and the one that lies within the village. Provide information on the edge restraint between the parking entrance area and the lawn area by way of cross-section and revise the plan to show removal of the western concrete apron and indicate eastern access to replace with an ADA-compliant concrete apron.
So now would you add an F to F to say we're taking?
Remove the parking calculations and.
Yes.
Remove the actual stalls, just show an area.
Fabulous.
And then on the general conditions of approval, I did mention A through, I believe, H. So I is engineering division to be contacted in no less than 48 hours in advance. Value to obtain engineering inspections during the construction process will either delay final approval.
Sluts, Matthew.
Or incur substantial costs to the applicant. J, the driveway shall be in compliance with IFC TC 33062 requirements. Have to show the street number, install a knox box, and obtain a roadwork permit from the Suffolk County Department of Public Works, and then to be completed prior to signature, submission of the engineering fee, file a notarized affidavit, and submit sets of complete plans.
And did you say lighting and signage comes back?
Yeah, that's, that was in those general.
And they're eliminating the parking?
Yeah, and eliminating the parking.
That's F, that's going to be F to one.
Yes.
Shouldn't this be printed out in orange on the top? It says parking areas. It's on the last page. It's the engineer, right on top of the second page. One more, turn it over. Right on the top, I have the structures right after that says parking.
That's, that's the requirement of whatever they're going to inspect. It's just a general.
So it doesn't need parking?
Doesn't, I don't think it specifically means the parking. It could be any drainage, if she's requiring drainage structures that she's going to inspect. But yeah, I can make those changes.
Any more questions? Do you have most for approval?
Motion.
Motion by Robin, second by Gloriaan. All in favor, I, opposed, abstentions, we have five yes. Pass everything to the right.
And then going on 16, I have a site disturbance at 237 Snake Hollow.
237 Snake Hollow?
Yes.
Okay. That's 16.
And I guess that's.
Site disturbance.
There is a plan in there. If you would like to see a paper plan, I do have a paper plan.
Okay, give us the paper plan.
This is the most recent revision.
Is that peckle fruit protection?
It, it is.
Really?
Yeah. It just really is. It's just inside of it.
I got my snakes and my sandies wrong.
Yeah, no, this is, this is close to the edge.
Yeah.
This was received back in the end of September. I did do an inspection. There's some existing vegetation that are on, that's on-site, so.
Did you say you had a record? No.
No, this is, there's a, there's a planting plan that's attached to this.
Oh, it's in the big packet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very end.
This is not a typical plan that we see because we're used to seeing a pitch pine oak forest. This is going to be more of a successional field type area.
Yeah.
But the plan is good. Marty does, did a very good plan.
How much overshere do they?
They are, let me tell you.
6,600.
They have a lot of lawn.
They sure do.
They're re-veging 6,600 square feet.
Right. It says it over there.
Yeah.
It's primarily in the front of the.
In the front, yeah.
Snake Hollow facing Snake Hollow.
Yeah, facing Snake Hollow. There are some.
Has the existing natural vegetation been checked?
Yes, and that's, that's what, it's shown correctly on the plan. I'd like to go out there ahead of time and check to make sure all the lines are right.
And the aerial shows that, right.
So we're looking just to approve this with the typical, typical conditions that, you know, be subject to inspection and they submit a revised survey.
Very good.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Jackie. Detective Correlli, all in favor, opposed, abstentions. Five yes, two absent, thank you as always. Claire, you got to walk on or?
No, I have number three is there.
Oh, okay. Bill Fox Grant, maybe?
Yes, the plans are submitted at 2:30.
And you're accepting them?
Because it's more work for me if I just don't just do it, right? So there's the elevation. It's a, it's an overly large building with traditional architecture. I need the other elevation though, there's one elevation.
Yeah.
But I'm going to set it for a piece of.
Which position is that?
This is the front.
This is County Road 39.
Need some shutters. Huh?
There's no door in that front.
No, there is no door in front.
Because it's not a house.
But it's still, they got a reward in the rear on the rear they got.
Yeah, they have a human door and garage doors.
It's a start, it's pre-submissioned, so. Uh, schedule it for December 13.
Very good, do we have a motion?
I don't have a.
Motion.
Motion by Jackie.
Second.
Second by Robin, all in favor, I, opposed, abstentions. Five yes, two absent.
Thank you.
You are just.
Thanks, Claire. I'll have those signed.
We'll start off with number six. Wildlife Associates Lot 17, this is 18 P-Hog Path, the property in the Wildlife Associates subdivision in East Quogue in the Aquifer Protection Overlay District. This board did a covenant amendment for a number of lots in that subdivision, including this property. That happened, I don't know, maybe a year ago or so, and that gave them 50% clearing. The applicant has come in with site disturbances to bring it back to compliance with the 50%. The reason for this discussion is that that 50% includes some revegetation that's shown on the survey, and the applicant would like to transfer in development rights or development rights for, I may, 6,578 square feet. So of the area that needs to be revegetated, let me just see something. Okay, so they would do 15,188 square feet of re-vedge and then transfer in 6,578 to cover the balance. Dave's going to speak to the board. I believe that they're looking to ask this board for a development right. This is in East Quogue. I believe what they're proposing is west of the canal, and so.
Well, this is west of the canal.
I'm sorry, yeah, but I mean, it's, it's, correct, I'm wrong, Dave, I don't know where the rights coming from, but it's, is it not East Quogue? I just don't.
But it's West Hampton and Northville.
Okay, so I'm going to have the applicant come up. So that, just wanted to have that discussion with the stores.
Welcome.
Number six.
Thanks.
For the applicant, David Gilmartin Jr., Farrell Fritz, 50 Station Road, Watermill, New York. Anthony hit the nail on the head with respect to the transfer of the development rights. And just, you know, I know you guys understand this, but this is for clearing. We're not looking to develop or add another structure or house or anything like that. It's basically for Aquifer protection here. So the lot, the, the two lots that we have to choose from are relatively close, west of the canal, the property is west of the canal. We can go looking for others, but I don't know that the Aquifer understands school district lines or hamlet lines or anything like that.
It's not, it's not within the same school district, which.
It's not within the same school district.
It's not for development.
Yeah.
My point is, we're not bringing more kids to the school.
So how, what do you do? Just start, you purchase property, you sterilize it?
Yes, yeah.
So where will the property be?
West Hampton.
Well, we have, I mean, we have the choice. The West Hampton piece that, that's available to us right now, that's, it appears to me to be the closer one.
And is it just sort of an on-piece? Is it connected to something?
It's, it's, it's part of the, the development rights.
That the town has. That the town has.
Right. The property that was issued a certificate. So I'll add this.
Do you have the certificate?
They did reference it and they had, I don't know.
We may have provided a copy.
It tells you exactly where it's from.
Yeah.
It's from West Hampton.
So...
No, I mean, but it'll say like the zoning or...
Obviously, the numbers have to work in the transfer, but the one thing, when they're closer together like this, I didn't realize where it was coming from. That's better, but to the other point, right, no school district because it's not a density issue. And the other side of it is this TDR now comes off the rolls that can never contribute towards an actual single-family residence. So to the extent that doing this for clearing is a density reduction, I mean, you could look at it that way.
Double reduction. It's true.
So I mean, I wanted that discussion. What I would say is, if the board's okay with it, I could put you on next week, Dave, so we can formalize anything because I just want to get the information to put it...
Yeah, we're just here to make sure that you, that the board was comfortable with it and then we'll...
That makes a lot of sense. These are heavily developed areas and probably the rights are coming from much more sensitive areas. Do we have to do a covenant amendment?
I mean, David, let's...
We did a covenant amendment.
We did?
Yeah.
Okay, so this goes under the Act for chapters?
Yeah, this is to rectify site disturbance. So our approval that we will do will be very similar to the one that you just did, but we will have the addition of a transfer of development right that goes with it.
And this is instead of revegetating?
It would be, there will be some revegetation and then...
But they choose not to or cannot?
Right. And then they would transfer the development rights to make up that balance that they're not doing.
I'm seeing a tennis court on this, but I just see a big open space on the aerial.
That is a tennis court.
That is a tennis court?
Yeah, that big square rectangle.
Yeah, sort of looks just like a...
Yeah, it's not coming up and I know. A lot of times these are clay and they don't photograph.
Is this APOD?
Yes. They both are. You know, that's where they come from, one to the other.
So, and is it...
They are limited. I will tell you, part of the issue is, you know, I don't think the building department looks at these very closely when they're issuing these building permits. If you look at these properties, they're not that big. They have tennis courts and swimming pools and houses and all the stuff. It's very easy when to go over...
Dennis had a very interesting and valuable suggestion. You said at some point, the survey, remember the clearing they should mark or, you said it last week?
Yeah.
Can you remember what you said?
Well, the first, inspections foundation.
There should be inspections after the foundations.
Yes.
Yeah.
To make sure that the clearing has been verified.
Yeah.
Can we impose that in some way? Can the planning department impose that?
If you can suggest it, it would probably have to be a change to the building code regulations.
To the building department?
Yeah, procedural.
Well, let's do it.
Yeah. So that when they go and inspect the foundation, it has to be correctly.
Right. Because, I mean, the APOD is, you know, the more you impact it, the more you impact the groundwater.
You got to speak into that.
You got yelled at.
Oh, I thought that was me.
No, no, no. It was, it was Jackie.
It was me? Oh, you, Jackie.
It was that Jackie.
Just one quick point. I think we're okay, but these rights are coming out of the core preservation area, which is...
They are. Okay.
So any action?
That's okay, Dave? We can put it on next week?
Sure. That's our point.
I mean, I just, me personally, it appears that there's a lot of over-clearing and the process doesn't seem to catch it before it happens.
Well, these are old. These were built out in the eighties.
A lot of these. And they get, and they get picked up when someone goes to get a building department.
I know.
And someone goes to get a CO in the building.
But I'm seeing it in my, in my neighborhood, like five or six houses just on my two-mile-long street. So I'm very sensitive to the fact that this, this is happening.
Yeah.
And it doesn't seem to be a good mechanism to prevent it rather than try to fix it.
This suggestion might help.
And also as these...
I wrote down my list. You can go over.
As these properties pass hands, new buyers, when they survey the property, we always ask, I know I do, ask for the clearing restrictions and have the clearing marked so that if an area is over-cleared before I close, I get that re-vedge.
I did not represent this client who...
No, I'm not saying you.
Who bought the problem, right?
Duly noted.
But I'm just saying that...
He went to do a project and was told he was over-cleared and had no idea.
My frustration with the process.
We are frustrated too, and it's like the system isn't working. But this, this is good, Dennis.
All right, good. So we'll go back next week.
We'll bring it back next week. Thank you, Mrs. Gilmore and David.
People are doing illegal things.
No kidding.
Anthony, do you have other applicants here?
Actually, I have Dave for the next one, which is Rogers.
Rogers?
You may recall, we had a discussion. This is the two-lot subdivision on Edge of Woods Road, and we went through the whole resolution, but the one sticking point was the recommendation from the fire district.
Yeah.
I have hard copies of the process. But everything should be attached. There should be a map and everything else. So then let me just say on this subdivision, what the fire district came back with was a recommendation that the board recommends that at the time of structural improvements to Lot Two, the property owner shall extend the water main seven hundred and fifty feet or half the distance from Deerfield Road in the direction of the property on Edge of Woods Road. So that's, that's the recommendation that is at the time.
Ironically, the building, your new house, right next door to this.
Yeah, and not part of this, right?
No, right next door, no fire protection.
So at your suggestion, we went to see the fire district, asked for, was it Polaco, the Polaco treatment, if you will, and...
Is that painful?
Yeah, it is because they said no. So it was, it's financially painful, but, you know, I don't know how, how we get around this. So begrudgingly, my client said that they would agree to bring it halfway at the time that they built the dwelling, right? As we talked about last time, their intent is to put a tennis court there and use it until such time as their children want to build a house or they sell it or whatever happens. So if the statement in there, the structural improvements, would mean a single-family dwelling, then we could agree to a covenant that would reflect that we will bring the water main halfway.
Halfway at the time.
At the significant cost, at the time that they, prior to the issuance of a building permit is what we propose.
It's too bad that new house can't participate. I mean, he's got to see.
The two houses being grown up.
Isn't that a subdivision, though? It's a standalone house, a single and separate?
There are two halls in the ground between this property and Deerfield.
It's, it is a shame that they have to take on the whole burden because they're willing to do their...
What is the cost per foot?
My, my recollection, it was $200,000 for them to bring it where it is to their property.
So that's a seven hundred feet?
No, that would be the whole thing. You've got to figure that that was, you know, they could be on the hook for a hundred grand or something.
I mean, we're hopeful that people will follow the chairman's advice and create a district there that covers that and everybody shares in the price.
Never do.
Then we have coverage.
Yeah.
I gave away all my resolutions.
Oh, here.
I'll take one.
Is it the same as what's on the computer?
Yes, it is.
Okay, then I don't need the paper.
So we can go right to the...
Yeah, I mean, we did everything. I just left out in the resolution items three and...
That's on page four.
On page four. And four, the bullet point, just to, that we would...
Right, just for the issuance of a building permit, if that could be the...
Yeah.
For the second one.
Prior to the issuance of a building permit, you'll have to...
For that, for the lot that's being created, right? So we have a house. I don't want them to have to get a building permit, I mean, get extended if they're doing, I don't know, an extension.
It should be execution of a...
For a single-family residence, yeah.
Yeah, execution of a contract.
On lot number...
Two.
Lot number two.
So we're changing the word structural improvement because that's a little vague.
Well, I looked into it actually, as a matter of fact, because I thought it was a little vague. And I spoke to, I forget the fellow's name. And also Kyle Collins, I mean, I sat down and went through this. He says it absolutely would be reasonable for the board to say for a single-family residence since that is what the requirement...
Yeah, that's, I'm concerned the term structural, that's very...
If there's a fire on a tennis court, I'm pretty sure they can get off.
Yeah.
Right, so it'd be for a house.
Yeah, I mean, and so that's what we...
So we're going to change the language in here?
For three and, well, I think we would just say...
In the whereas, because, just be careful because we have this language again.
It's going to be eliminated. Those comments are actually going to be...
Eliminated?
Eliminated. And I'm just going to put in...
Require us to put that language in a covenant?
Covenant. That's what we're saying. That prior to the issuance of a building permit for Lot Two for a single-family residence, they would need to comply with the fire district requirement for bringing seven feet.
Because that terminology's structural...
No, I just left it out just because I didn't, before the meeting, update it.
So it's out or?
No, it's going to be revised. That's all. I grade those areas out so you know those are going to be revised with what I just said.
Excellent. Because otherwise, it's a little...
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
In ten years, we won't remember what it meant.
If we're here.
Yeah.
But every other condition was as...
I meant on the board.
About ten months.
We'll be in another, another place.
Okay.
So with that, that's going...
Does that change the...
With that change?
We can approve the resolution. Very good. Do we have a motion for...
Motion.
Motion by Robin?
Second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor. I oppose extensions. Five yes, two absent.
Thank you.
Very good. Got through it.
Another one done.
Before we do number nine, I don't have an applicant here for that, but I do have an applicant here for Bola Market, so.
Bola Market, okay. I intend it's a ZBA referral.
It's a pre, pre-submission conference report. Yes, the pre-submission conference report. That will also act as a...
That's number 10.
That is number 10. If you want, I have hard copies.
Page fifty. Are you prepared?
I'm always prepared. Nothing else.
Well, that's the mobile.
We'll get, I'm going to go through it and then we'll get...
That's the mobile thing.
Don't worry.
I have it in my package.
So everybody knows where this site is. This is the mobile gas station across the street from the Boardy Barn in Hampton Bay. It's on the corner of Terrace, I believe Terrace and the highway there. Has a little kiosk in the, you know, the middle and four pump stations. It's in the R-20 zoning district. Let's see. The gas station use goes back to 1966. There was a ZBA decision and then a subsequent CO. Then in 1972, the property was changed from E-business to R-20. They came in, then they went to the zoning board and got another approval to redo the gas station, and they got planning board approval as well. It's great out there because I forgot to put the date in, but I have the site plan approval date that I will put in on the first page there. And on the second page, the proposal is for the removal of the center kiosk. It's going to be replaced with two new pumps stations, so it goes from four to six, plus they're proposing a 2,000-square-foot market convenience store. Do you guys have the map? Is it on there?
Uh huh.
I have copies, hard copies.
Yeah, it's kind of really...
It's hard to see, I'm sure.
Yeah, it's, yeah. It's just a big rectangle, but I don't see any one.
It doesn't show where the...
Here's another copy.
Yeah, that's it.
So 2,000 square foot market, they gave us the site plan that you see there and the setting elevations. The applicant has indicated that the gas station and market uses would operate 24/7. I believe the gas station now operates 24/7, but this would add a 2,000-square-foot convenience store also operating 24/7. I believe, that's what I believe my understanding is. So we had a pre-submission conference on the 27th of September. No public comments received or during the 30-day written comment period, and I've identified some preliminary issues.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Is that going to make the third market attached to a gas station that we're doing in that area? Because you have the one that's attached to...
We've probably done more than that.
No, I'm just saying, just recently, this is, seems at the third.
Is the Shell station we did?
Yeah.
The one you're doing, the stop and shop? Is the closest.
Yeah, so you have...
Then this.
And then the one by the Shell station that's on the other side of the 24. That's just, I just want to make it's...
And you also have a supermarket across the street, so it's like...
Well, you know, I'll just say...
I just want it noted that this is the third.
And this is what, we're, they're all coming in for this. That's what they're doing.
Oh, yeah.
They're getting rid of the service stations, the ones that have service stations. Sunoco on 39, for example.
Right. So they're getting rid of the bays and doing this.
So the first comment is that this would serve as ZBA referral comments if they...
They have to go to ZBA.
Well, I'm going to explain in the next point there. The existing gas station is a pre-existing non-conforming use in the R-20 zoning district. I think the proposed two additional pumps plus the 2,000-square-foot addition of a market is an expansion of a non-conforming use, subject to ZBA approval pursuant to 16330-167 of the Town Code. An expansion of a non-conforming use may be permitted, provided that such enlargement or extension shall not exceed in all 50% of the floor area of such building or structure actually devoted to such non-conforming uses. Now, when you don't have building structures, how is that 50% calculated? I don't know the answer to that. That's not this board's... But I'm just saying here, in this case, the two additional pumps represents a 50% increase in the number of pumps on that site.
Just the pumps.
Just the pumps. So that may eat up the 50% expansion. I don't know the answer to that, so I put that in there that this is, you know, what I think it looks like, you know. That would be the ZBA's decision. But I think that, that's an accurate assessment.
So then this 2,000-square-foot convenience store is an additional use?
Which, the next point, point three, plan refines the 2,000 convenience market as a second principal use, which is not permitted in the R-20 zoning district and would require a use variance from the ZBA. By any measure, a 2,000-square-foot market is a destination use in and of itself, and it's similar to other Bola or 7-Eleven stores. They run anywhere between 2 and 3,000 square feet.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, you know, and you will see that that's similar. And it's not appropriate on a residentially zoned property with a pre-existing commercial use. It is surrounded by residential properties to the east, to the west, and then to the south. Obviously, on the other side of the highway, it's all commercial uses. And although the current gas station operates 24 hours a day, the addition of a 2,000-square-foot convenience market also operating 24 hours a day would intensify the use of the property, whereas the goal of the Town Code is to reduce and/or eliminate non-conforming uses.
Thank you very much.
I know. When she said it, I was like, ooh. I say therefore, the planning board doesn't support any relief that would allow for a second principal use on the property. So then I go on to point four. In the event the ZBA considers approval of a convenience market for the site, the planning board points out that in most cases, such accessory uses occur within commercial zones. Normally, they're in the highway business zoning district or at least a commercial district rather than residential properties, but that based on previous ZBA cases, the convenience stores have in fact been limited in the area of retail sales. For example, Strong Oil on Montalk Highway, which is on the corner of New Play, right, that one was limited to 400 square feet. And then the Sunoco on County Route 39 was limited to 922. That was the existing building, the, the service station that was converted. So, you know, I go on to say, you know, while the planning board questions whether an accessory convenience market can even be accommodated on the site in light of the expansion provisions that limit it to 50%, I do say the size of the building will need to be greatly reduced in order to be consistent with other similar projects.
Well, I mean, you can't have a 50% expansion of nothing, you know?
Right. I just think because of the way the code is worded...
Zero times.
And I don't, I don't have a precedent to say how the ZBA would treat a 50% expansion when we're not talking about...
Anything.
Structures, but it does refer to density and other provisions.
So typically, you're, typically you see gas stations that are located in the highway business zone. There's a case, ExxonMobil, the New York City Standards of Board of Appeals, which basically says and recognizes that these small convenience stores can be accessory to your gasoline stations, even though the convenience store might not be an allowable use in the district, where your gas station is allowed in the district. So again, highway business. Here, it's different. You have R-20. So you have a pre-existing non-conforming use to start out with. So that's the distinction there, and that's what the ZBA is going to have to work with.
And the reason why I worded this, Jackie, the way I did, was I'm pointing out that we're questioning whether or not this is possible, given those limitations. And I hate doing this, but if you're going to act favorably on this, the size of the building would need to be greatly reduced. I think that's, you know, maybe we don't want to say, but you know.
No, no, that's, I think it's effective.
That, then number five, I say while the planner finds a project cannot be approved as proposed, had zoning board issues, here's some site plan related comments that I made relating to the site. So the first one is that this is an unlisted action. It will be subject to environmental review at the time of a formal application. The applicant did submit a traffic analysis from Stonefield Engineering, but it would be more appropriate to review that at the time of a secret determination as opposed to a pre-submission conference. So, and I'm sure they'll use some of that when they go to the zoning board. B, there's two front yards, therefore there'll be one rear and one side yard. I say here, the proposed building is set back 10 feet from the east property line, which is the minimum rear yard setback for accessory structures. However, as a convenience market, this is second principal use, the minimum rear yard setback is 60 feet. I'm going to circle this just so you know. I'm actually basing this on just an initial discussion with one of the building inspectors, Dennis, just to say, this is, you have two front yards. Which one of these is the rear yard?
Yeah.
In this case, it was the east, but I don't actually know that because it was just Dennis. It wasn't like that determination was made. So I think I would like to add something here that says a determination from the building, you know.
Well, it's a yard, it's a yard, it's the shortest front.
Yeah, yeah.
So the survey, if you look at the survey, the survey should tell you.
It's sort of hard in this case because it's got the radius. Yeah, so Dennis did do that, by the way, and this is the analysis that came out. I think I would just put something in there that the applicant shall confirm with the building department.
Okay, good.
You know, the yard designations. That way we're not, you know. C talks about the parking requirements. Just briefly, that the parking calculations are incorrect. They're doing it based on one per 180 square feet of gross floor area for retail, but we would still treat this as a convenience market and it's one per 100, plus five spaces for the gas station use. Based on that, that would be 25 parking spaces they would require, which would be difficult to accommodate on this property. So that's noted in there. The building elevations reveal, this is sort of like a franchise-style architecture. So I note in there that given this is a non-conforming use in a residential zone, the proposed architecture must be residential and designed similar to the requirements of the HO or HC zoning district. Those are transition zones. So in as far as this is a similar transition zone, I think that would make sense.
Like the Bridge Hampton gas station right on Snake Hollow.
Or the, yeah.
Which is beautiful.
Yeah. There's a few of them.
Speedway, that does one of the North Highways.
And then E, I just made some comments about the signage on the front here. And again, this is just a submission conference, but they indicated that the large Bola sign on the front would be internally illuminated, which you can't do in the R-20 zoning district any like, and that the two placards probably are excessive. And same thing with the elevation that'd be facing Terrace Street. They have another sign there.
Yeah.
And so I just say that that could be eliminated and just rather than have a blank wall, you could just add some design features that would address the street right of way. Those are just some preliminary site plan comments. We have a different, you know...
Excellent.
So I'm sure the applicant might have something to say.
Sure. Sure.
Good afternoon, everybody. Just my appearance again, for the record. David Altman from the Law Office of Brown and Altman, LLP, 538 Broad Hollow Road, Suite 301, Melville, New York. Nice to see everybody again, and it's hard to believe it's already been a month and a half since we last visited you. I appreciate the comments, and we received them yesterday afternoon. Wish I had the time to read them yesterday afternoon. I was actually out blackfishing off of Fisher's Island yesterday.
Nice day.
It was a little rough yesterday. It was 25 to 30 knots in six-to-eight-foot seas. We got beat up pretty good.
Did you catch any fish?
Yeah, we probably had about 30 fish. Probably put back another 50 or 60, but it's a nice fish. Good day. In any event, I did take the opportunity to review before coming here this afternoon the recommendation report prepared by planning. Thanks, Anthony, for having me. I do have several comments, but let me just say, I appreciate the input. And, you know, look, we're here to work with the folks in the town and to try and make a use, which we recognize as a non-conforming use. A, continue to exist, and B, a substantial income-producing asset for the client, but at the same time, to fit in well within the community. And hearing comments both at the hearing on September 27th and today, as well as noted in the planning report, obviously, size of the store is an issue. We have the ability, and we prepared, I had my engineer rough out an alternative plan quickly before I came out here. The smallest store that BOLA has right now operating is over on Route 111 and 347 in Smithtown. It's about 1,200 square feet. It increases the setbacks both along the east lot line and to a minor degree along the south lot lines, to a nice degree, and of course, substantially shrinks the footprint of the building. So I have a couple of copies of that. I might as well hand them up to you, just so you can take a look at them, if you don't mind. This is an example. That's the smallest building we have operating right now for BOLA.
Did you see it, Anthony?
Anthony, what was you, what did you say we needed not to make this a principle?
Well, so, if I may, let me just, I'll get into that, if that's okay, Mr. Long. I read, I heard the comment, and I read the report relative to destination use. And with all due respect, and I understand based upon the initial size of the store, why that assessment may have been made, but by any objective empirical data, particularly the IT data, convenience stores are not destination uses. They are pass-by uses. They derive 70% to 75%, if not more, of their customer base from pass-by uses, meaning cars that are already on the road. Folks simply do not get in their car to head to a convenience store. That's not the nature of the use. And to the extent we're amenable and willing to reduce the size of the store, frankly, it makes it even more so. In connection with the issue of the nonconformity and potential expansion thereof, Mr. LaFaro, I hear your comments, where I wrestle with this all the time, particularly, you know, on sites like this, where you deal with stations that are called sometimes legacy stations built in the 40s and 50s, where they're non-conforming uses. I've done, you know, applications in Western Suffolk and Nassau County, where the size of the property is 11,000, 12,000, 13,000 square feet, but it was a busy corner when it was built in the 40s and the 50s and the 60s, and that's what you want on a gas station. You want that busy corner with the pass-by traffic. That being said, with respect to the number of pumps, I've spoken to my client, we'll keep it at four pumps, but we're going to remove the kiosk from that center island, and perhaps to make the station look even more attractive, what we'll do is we'll put a nice planter or a set of plantings in that center island, so it beautifies the site even more. But if we're going to take into consideration the number of pumps relative to expansion of a nonconformity, I think you ought to look at the fact that there's an existing canopy there, which has been approved, which is fairly substantial in size. The canopy itself is 92 by roughly 32 square feet. So if you're going to look into, quote, "expanding" by some degree, whether it's 50% or some factor less, all the structures, adding a 1,200-square-foot non-convenience store arguably would be under that threshold. Anthony made an interesting comment, and I'm not quite sure I agree with the point or the logic, but I'm going to respond anyway relative to adding an accessory use such as a convenience store, quote, "in a residential zone." The site is originally built in '66, was commercially zoned, upzoned, and then the applicant or the owner at that time came back to the town, got approvals to rebuild the station as a specially permitted use. So it was contemplated and essentially permitted to have this nonconformity in a residential district. As the board has, is, I'm sure, well aware, gas stations, particularly gas stations with repair or without repair, simply don't do repair anymore. It's not a profit center, it's a money loser. The equipment necessary to operate a repair station is incredibly expensive, and as such, the trend for the last 20 to 25 years has been the conversion of existing repair facilities into the convenience component, because it helps subsidize and make what's otherwise marginally profitable, the gas station. You know, here in New York, we regrettably, and we all see it at the pump every day, we pay, I believe, the second highest amount in taxes per gallon on a gasoline. So out of the gallon of gas you put in your tank, roughly 73 or 74 cents on that gallon is taxes. It's a pretty expensive number. We are dealing with a margin of anywhere from 4 to 5 cents, maybe 8 cents on a gallon of gas. So the convenience component is really essential to making sure the gasoline station itself stays viable. I, again, moving down the list in order here, to the extent Anthony and I spoke before, relative to the front yard issue, I took a quick look at the code. If the front yard is the shortest leg facing a public road, then arguably, yes, then the east lot line would be the rear yard. But I just want the board to be aware that the proposed location is positioned as such because we didn't want to increase or intercede further into that vegetated buffer along the south. And that is a point that we had discussed in some detail with Anthony prior to making the pre-app application. With reduction in size of the store, turning to the parking component, I think we would need roughly 15 or 16 spaces. And with the site as modified, we'd essentially be there. We may be one space short, so you're talking perhaps a one-car parking variance at most. And I will tell you, at a 1,200-square-foot store, assuming that's ultimately what's approved by the BZA, you're not going to have five employees in the facility. You're going to have at most two. So there will never be the need for five cars for BZA parking. With regard to the architecture, we had proposed a Hampton-style architecture, similar to the stations you had mentioned with the cedar shakes, and to the extent there's anything additional or other architectural treatments that this board and perhaps the ARB and planning would like to see, we would, you know, welcome any input. Do you have any documentation you'd like to forward to us? Because I don't want to keep reinventing the wheel over and over. That would be very helpful. Finally, with regard to signage, we're okay with the non-illuminated signage. We're happy to proceed with the signage as generally permitted in the town, whether it be externally illuminated ground mounts or gooseneck lighting above, whichever planning and this board and ARB ultimately are comfortable with. We're okay with that. We just want to make sure at the end of the day that a motorist driving at night can see the price of a, you know, the gallon of gasoline on the ground sign at a reasonably safe distance and not have any issues relative to making safe turns into and out of the site. I think for the most part, that addresses the comments that were received in September of the report. If there's any questions you have of me, I'm happy to entertain them.
Well, I would suggest is, right, the whole purpose of a pre-submission conference report is to identify issues, and the applicant can go ahead, and I did. So I don't know that we need to change too much in this report, other than what I would suggest is, I don't know that I would use this as the ZBA referral, only because they may be submitting revised plans or amending the plans.
I was just thinking that.
And so I would just take that out, and that way, when we get a referral, I'll respond to the plans. And incidentally, when you make that, you could always go through my report and say, here's how I, you know, agree with how I address that, so...
Yeah, we'd want to see this back as a referral way.
You know, and I think that's what we would do. So we'll take that out, and just when you have revised plans and you submit, then we'll comment on those.
No, I think that's a good idea, and what we will do is we'll put it, we'll submit a separate addendum detailing the changes made to the plans relative to the initial comment memo. That way, we all know where we are.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So with that minor amendment, Anthony, thank you.
Yep.
Can we adopt the report? Very good. Do we have a motion to adopt the report?
Yes.
Motion by Gloria, and second by Jackie. All in favor, aye. Oppose, abstentions. We have five ayes.
Let me just quickly go back to nine, Sunset Equity. Just tell me if you have a...
Very good report, Anthony. You're all reasoned and researched. Night.
Night.
Enjoy the fish.
Thank you, Dr. Long. I've got some arrows in my...
Sunset Equity, okay.
This is a property on Sunset Avenue in East Quogue. We have other applications there. Holocaust comes to mind. This is a two-lots subdivision, right down the middle here. It used to be two lots, and then it just merged. They just merged, they fly... This is a case where they have enough land area total for two lots, but not enough upland area. So that's the issue with this, with this one. So to recreate the lots, they don't have enough upland area to give them two lots.
Is this the same as what's on the computer?
Yes, yes.
What do you need, Anthony?
I just had my...
Your report?
They don't have enough area exclusive of wetlands.
Exclusive of the wetlands, that's correct.
Sunset. To subdivide.
To subdivide, so, or to re-subdivide the property.
Oh, your reports?
I must be losing it today, folks.
Is there an other, is there an extra?
I just gave it multi-fold.
Sorry.
So this is just the pre-application report for that two-lot subdivision. So it is, oh, it's sitting up here. So it's R-80, 32 Sunset Avenue. And like I said, they're deficient with the amount of upland, so it would require relief from the zoning board in order to proceed. This is a standard plan, and then on page one of the report, and a cluster plan isn't warranted. It's a minor subdivision. It's actually a type-two action. In this case, it's a type-two action, even though it's on the water, has wetlands. It's actually not unlisted. It doesn't really conform to the comp plan. There's nothing specific in there, but to the extent that it's laid out the way the original subdivision was laid out, it doesn't really conform to zoning under today's regulations because of the upland area. The park requirement will just be set at a flat fee for the one additional lot. It's not subject to the Workforce Housing Act. We got comments from the town engineer. Actually, they did a, they sent this out to the Rayner Group. So page three identifies their comments, most notable being, or the most important, there's really no engineering issues, but this is in the high priority area. So any new septic system would need to be that. And quite frankly, I don't know, the health department may require that the other one get upgraded, so that will be up to them. We got comments from the conservation board, and they have flagged the wetlands, and they're accurate. We have to do the referral, and they indicate the required setback requirements. They're recommending easements to cover the wetlands area and the buffer areas, and we could have that discussion at the final, but I think I put that in the recommendations. They recommend the single four-foot-wide access path to the water. And then they talk about removal of certain structures that are within the bounds of the recommended conservation easements.
Anthony, has the wetlands moved in this area?
I could tell you, I don't, I don't know about the whole area, but from the, from the map that I originally saw to the current map here, they didn't move.
Didn't.
On this particular property, in any case.
When were they flagged to the wetlands?
2018, yep. It was, it was recently done and verified. It's on the surveys, verified by the Environment Division. Okay, so we got the Office of Fire Prevention didn't have anything other than the street addresses. DEC said this may be subject to a title wetlands permit, so the applicant has been advised of that. And the Health Department said they have no application yet, but obviously, final application would require the Health Department approval. Number one, in the recommendations about the variance needed, I do note, once you apply wetland setbacks and buffers, they might be somewhat restricted on that other lot. So they may want to just, I say, do a building envelope analysis to see if you need any additional, you know, relief or anything like that.
Yeah.
But you also get, they also give you the benefit of getting some relief automatically when you're trying to maximize wetland setbacks. So there is some front yard automatic relief built into the code. In this case, number two, I don't have a problem with two individual driveways. That's just the nature of Sunset Avenue. It's not a heavily-traveled road. Number three, this is the high-quality improvement area, so the septic systems would need the new innovative systems. Four, we're going to do the 292 referral to the ZBA, but the map should show the required setbacks, 75 feet, 100 feet, 125, and 150, plus the jurisdictional setbacks of 200 feet from town and 300 feet for the DEC. Five, conservation easements to be established covering the wetlands, as well as extending 100 feet and 75 feet landward of the wetlands on proposed lots one and two. That's because on the one lot, it is an existing house, so the buffer requirement isn't 100 feet. On an improved lot, it's 75 feet. It's 100 feet when it's a vacant lot. So that's the difference, the two buffer requirements. I have just repeated, six is already set in there. Compliance with the Department of Fire Prevention, this relates to driveway standards. Eight, Health Department approval with the final plat. And then nine, submission of the requisite information. You know, I...
So number one is key, because if they don't have a building lot...
That's right. I suspect, and I told the architect, you should, you know, and you have houses that are pushed up against the road. There may be, you know, especially the other one, there might be some, you know, the reason to get some of that relief, but it's built into the code. So when you're, when, when you're maximizing your wetland setbacks, the Town Code allows you to get reduced front yard setbacks.
Right.
Yeah. So, you know, they'll, they'll have to take a look at it. If they have an issue, then they have an issue. We could always amend the report. That's all I had for this one.
That's good.
Good. Motion by Zuccarelli to adopt the report. Do you have a second? Second by Jackie, all in favor, aye.
Actually, the next one, Bridgehampton Road Races, is going to be off the agenda.
Oh, okay. Road Races is off.
And that's number 15. And just real quick, number 17 is also off the agenda. I just want to say, if that's a ZBA referral, I have attached the report for you guys. The reason why I pulled it from the agenda, it's a situation on Penny Lane where there's a pre-existing CO for five cottages on the property. They converted the garage to a six cottage, and so it's an expansion of a nonconforming use. The problem is, is I think my analysis of the affordable housing requirement, I'm not sure if I'm correct or if I was being overzealous, so I told the applicant that since we're not on any timeframes, they're not on the agenda probably till December, I said, I'll put it on next week so I can be sure that what I told them was correct.
Good.
So...
Yeah, pass stuff down, please.
And then that's all I have.
Anthony, could you hand me those plans that I, otherwise I want to forget them. Thank you so much.
You got to do the signing today.
Yep. I'm the designated sign.
We have a wetland permit that we...
Ah. Okay.
Do you have a clip, Anthony?
Good afternoon, everyone. I just have a couple of quick items, so it shouldn't be very long. JSC Resources, which is agenda item number four, is asking for a standard one-year extension of the pre-application report that was adopted on September 14th, 2017, which was valid until September of 2018. So this would give them an additional year till September 14th, 2019.
Do you have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Zuccarelli, second by Jackie. All in favor, aye. Oppose, abstentions. What number was that again?
This was number four.
Four, okay.
Five, ayes.
Got it.
Two absent.
How about five?
Five is Leonard Rigio. Five is Leonard Rigio. So they just received final conditional approval. This will be the second 90-day extension. This will actually give them until March 9th, 2017.
Is this, is this the piece that was carved out of a larger parcel?
Yes, it is, yeah. And then you guys got the tree preservation, the large trees to be shown on the map, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so this was mine, and Matt finished it up for the final conditional.
So now, it's a 90-day extension?
It's just a 90-day extension of the final conditional approval.
Okay. Motion?
Motion by Jackie.
Second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor. Aye, opposed, abstentions. We have five ayes, two absent. I think 12 is wrong, yeah.
Um, next is Mill Creek Heights, which is number seven. So there's different owners, so the principal has to change on the road and drainage performance bond. So it is remaining the same, the obligation date is the same, and the form, I mean, the six months after for the surety of the security, as well as the amount of the performance bond, which is $362,725, all will remain the same. We're just switching the principal on this one.
We have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Robin.
Second.
Second by Gloria, all in favor. Aye, opposed, abstentions. Five ayes, two absent.
And I do have an add-on for that one. I do apologize, when I put it on, it's actually just Mill Creek Heights, because we had two performance bonds, so we have to take two actions. So it's a, Mill Creek Heights also had a performance bond for revegetation, a split-rail fence, and some monuments that had to be installed. So that is an add-on, and it's $79,801, and that is going to remain, again, same obligation